Okay, Michelle has turned on the camera. Give us just a few seconds. Okay, I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to your opponent's stand on my nation, and to the faithful, every citizen of this world.
Okay, welcome everyone to the October 17th meeting. Minutes of the October 3rd meeting. We have a motion to approve the minutes. We have a motion in a second on the minutes. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills. We have a motion for the financial report.
So move.
Second.
And a second. One real quick question, Steve. There was a reimbursement it looked like to the flying jet?
Gasoline.
Our gasoline.
Oh, it was our gasoline. Okay, very good. I wasn't sure if it was a reimbursement or a bill. Thank you. Any other discussion on the financial report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Lou, you're on.
Okay, the first item I have is a proclamation, sixteen, two thousand eighteen. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Proclamation sixteen, two thousand eighteen, a proclamation of the mayor and commissioner of the town of Elton declaring October twenty first through the twenty seventh, two thousand eighteen Economic Development Week in Elton. Whereas economic development relies on local government leadership to promote and support the vision for developing resilient communities, and whereas the mayor and commissioner recognize that supporting existing businesses and creating opportunities for new businesses and entrepreneurs are key components in strengthening Elton's economic future for generations to come. And whereas economic development organizations such as the Maryland Economic Development Association and the Elton Alliance serve as resources committed to enhancing Elton's economic growth and vitality, and whereas economic, I mean, I'm sorry, now therefore it be it known that the mayor and commissioner of the town of Elton nearby proclaim October twenty first through the twenty seventh, two thousand eighteen, as Economic Development Week, and Elton encourage all citizens to recognize the contributions of economic development organizations and the importance of building and maintaining healthy economies.
We have a motion to accept proclamation P seventeen dash two thousand eighteen Economic Development Week. We have a motion?
Take it.
And a second. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next proclamation, eighteen Municipal Government Works, a proclamation of the mayor and commissioner of the town of Elton declaring the month of November, two thousand eighteen Municipal Government Works Month in the town of Elton, Maryland. Town of Elton has established as, was established as Cecil County seat in seventeen eighty seven and has evolved as Cecil County's largest and most progressive municipality. And whereas Elton joined one hundred and fifty-six other municipalities in Maryland who proudly serve their respective residents and business communities, and whereas municipal government represents the most responsible, responsive level of government, allowing citizens direct access to their elected officials, observe the operations of the government, and benefit from the many services provided by their government. Whereas in an effort to educate citizens about municipal government and the importance of their participation, the town of Elton is proud to promote municipal government awareness. And whereas municipalities have enhanced the quality of life of their respective residents by providing essential government services, maintaining access to safe drinking water, providing wastewater treatment, maintaining parks and supporting recreation activities, promoting economic development and job opportunities, and supporting local businesses, along with providing many other services and opportunities to help make Maryland a great place to live, work, and enjoy. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and commissioner of the town of Elton nearby proclaim the month of November, two thousand eighteen, as Municipal Government Works Month in the town of Elton.
We have a motion to approve proclamation P eighteen dash two thousand eighteen Municipal Government Works Week, Month.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item I have is ordinance twelve, two thousand eighteen for introduction. The ordinance twelve, event chapter nine point oh eight, defenses against public peace and decency. I'll read it into the record. The purpose of amending the code of the town of Elton, chapter nine point zero eight regarding discharge of firearms within the town and duty of parents or guardians in fortune telling. Whereas Article eleven E, institution of the state of Maryland, section four, one oh three, B three, vital one, I mean subtitle one, vital four, vision to local government article, case you're interested in that. Banning the code of Maryland, the charter in the code of the town of Elton applies the authority by which the board of commissioners may adopt repeal or amend the ordinances of the town of Elton. Whereas the board of commissioners determine that chapter nine point oh eight, section nine point oh eight zero one zero discharge of firearms should be amended to prohibit the discharge of firearms within the town for the purpose of protecting and helping the safety and welfare of the residents. And whereas the board of commissioners has further determined that chapter nine point oh eight, section nine point oh eight point two zero, zero two zero, excuse me, duty of parent guardians regarding firearms should be amended as set forth here and after. And whereas the board of commissioners has further determined that chapter nine point oh eight, section nine zero eight over three, fortune telling should be repealed since the Maryland Court of Appeals struck down a similar ordinance banning fortune telling in Maryland. And whereas the board has further determined that chapter nine point oh eight, section nine point oh eight, number four zero, penalty should be amended to designate a specific penalty for the violation of this chapter. Under the discharge of firearms, change or in the, it's unlawful for any person to fire or discharge to set off any gun, rifle, pistol, revolver, shotgun, or other firearm, or other dangerous weapon of any character within the town, provided that this section shall not apply to members of any military unit when engaged in military operations, or by persons performing a military honor ceremony, firing blanks, or to use firearms in a lawful defense of a person, or to use firearms by law enforcement officers in lawful discharge of their duty, or at any firing range permitted by the town zoning board. Section nine point oh eight zero two, zero, duty of parents and guardians regarding firearms. Unlawful for any parent guardian or other adult person having the care and custody of a minor knowingly to permit such minor to violate any provisions of section nine point zero eight point zero one zero, which is the discharge of firearms. For section nine point oh eight zero three zero, fortune telling is struck and appealed. Section nine point zero eight zero three zero, violation penalty. Violation of this chapter shall be a misdemeanor and a person convicted thereof before a judge in this, judge in this court shall be subject to applying not to exceed one thousand dollars for imprisonment, not to exceed ninety-eight, or go such fine in prison.
We have a motion to accept ordinance twelve dash two thousand eighteen, amending the code of the town of Elton, title nine, chapter nine point oh eight, for introduction purposes only.
So move.
You have a motion? Any discussion? I had, I had a quick comment. Chief, we had a firearm being shot last night in our town. How can we use this ordinance to, is it, is it, can it be added on to the charges?
It could be, yes.
And, and then with those charges, I think, does it make, I guess certainly think it makes sense if we can add those on. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item I have is resolution R eleven, two thousand eighteen. I'll read it. The resolution of the mayor and commissioner of the town of Elton establishing Recreation Advisory Committee. Whereas the town of Elton has established and maintained a Department of Parks and Recreation, and Department's director is responsible for staffing, budgeting, scheduling, developing, and implementing recreation programming, and provides, provides oversight for this department. Whereas the mayor and commissioner reached a consensus that a diverse group of Elton's residents should provide with input and guidance for recreation programs that appeal to a broad range of residents and their interests. Whereas the mayor and commissioners have determined that an organized and structured committee would likely provide the best avenue for developing recreation activities and programs that would improve the quality of life in the town and enhance opportunities where residents become more engaged in social relationships with other residents of the community. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and commissioners of the town of Elton as follows. One, that a Recreation Advisory Committee, RAC, shall be created for the purpose of creating and developing recreation activities and programs for implementation by the Department of Parks and Recreation. Two, that there should be up to five, up to five members appointed to the RAC by the mayor and commissioner to serve for a period of one year from the date of appointment, subject to reappointment at the expiration of respective terms, who shall serve without compensation. This advisory board shall select a chair and vice chair to conduct the meetings. The chair and vice chair, in the absence of the chair, shall coordinate the date, time, location, agenda for meetings of the RAC, and frequency of those meetings to be termed by the RAC. That the RAC provides recommendations for budgeting recreation program along with recommendations for revenue development, and for the program, that the director of the Department of Parks and Recreation serves as liaison between the RAC and the mayor and commissioner to apply guidance in the development of recreation program.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept resolution R eleven dash two thousand eighteen, establishing a Recreation Advisory Committee? We have a motion? And a second. Any discussion?
It was well written, boss.
The only discussion that I want to comment on is that the board has started giving some names, and I think what it will do is we'll make a post on social media to ask if anyone else wants to be involved, but right now we've got three names, and we spoke to two of them, and there's, there's actually someone in this room that we haven't asked yet, but so far I think we've got three committed to move forward, one of the Parks and Recreation Board, so this is great. So hopefully we get two more names and we can all kind of agree on who they're going to be. Maybe at the first meeting in November, we'll make those appointments.
And it is Taylor?
Yes. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries. I'll give you a chance to talk a little bit, little bit. Okay, my report, let's see, we had, it's a busy week, couple weeks in Elton. We had several grand openings over the weekend, a lot of action in our town, and of course the week before, I know we've got a, a large group here to talk a little bit about the Grand Prix race, and this is our first official meeting since the Grand Prix race, and I have to tell you, it was a, it was a great turnout, a lot of Pepto Bismol for me, but I want to stress, it was a, it was a very fun time, and it was a, once again, a very nice, nice event. Last week, I went to the Maryland Municipal League Conference, the ball conference, and I was very fortunate, I was able to be one of the moderators for, for one of the conferences, and that conference was Public Information Officers. And they went through, no matter what the size of your town is, there, there needs to be training with, with key personnel, or direct one person from the, from the organization to be able to, able to talk to the media, so that they can get the answers that they need, and able to have, to make sure we're, we're doing the right thing without stepping over ourselves with not the same story, let's say, let's put it that way. I mean, that's the wrong words to use, but we want to make sure that we're, we're doing everything proper, and we're giving out the correct information and not the incorrect information. And today with social media, as we know, it's very important to get your message out, but it's also very important to squash the, the information that's not incorrect. And that's something that we failed to do as a town, is a lot of times we'll, we'll see things in social media, and we need to be able to give the facts. And so I'm asking the board to consider maybe next year's budget that we, one, either bring in a public information officer for, for the town of Elton, or we get training with key members of staff, and that workshop was actually a pretty good start of that training, where they could train everyone in the room, and sort of things that we should say and can't say, if that makes any sense. But it was a very good meeting with the Maryland Municipal League, I'm glad I went. The only bad thing was is it rained on me, I was all the way down at the end by the waterfront, and it rained, and my, my hotel was a quarter mile up the street, and it poured, I think everyone knows how bad it poured on Thursday night last week, and my gosh, I was wearing a suit, and I was so, I've never been so wet in my life. I think my, my shoes and my, it was, it was unbelievable. So the, I guess the other thing that this past week that has got, I think, the town staff and, and of course the residents of the community excited about is there, could be an opportunity for the town of Elton to acquire the Elton Armory. And just a little bit about the process, and Lou, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but the process has always been, in the, in the past, it was when, when they declared surplus on one of these properties, it would first, the first opportunity would be to another state rent organization, or a state property would get the first dibs on it. Then if no one, no other state agency wanted that building, then it would fall to the county, the county government had their, was next in line. And my understanding, now that the county has did a press release and stated that they have no interest in that building at this point, it's actually in our laps right now. And I used social media this past week, and I asked our residents and the, whoever we're friends with on social media, and there's a lot of, I was getting a lot of inquiries from, from folks from all over the county, as well as all over the state, and I was looking more for input from the residents of the town of Elton, but the bottom line was a very high percentage in the upper nineties of, of our residents of the town of Elton believe that we should move forward and take a look at, if it makes sense for us to acquire that property. Countywide, statewide, it was right around still at ninety percent. There was only maybe five, ten people that were adamant, and out of that, there was two that I could identify that actually lived in our town. So it was a very high percentage of, and it was viewed by over four thousand people. So we got a lot of comments onto those couple pages, and it's been shared over a lot of different pages. So I just wanted to make the board aware, I think it's something that we should truly consider, and I think that we've all kind of talked a little bit about moving forward with the armory. I think there's going to be some questions, well, town of Elton, what do you guys want to do with it? I can tell you at this point, I'm, I'm wide open, we're still moving forward with our community rec center, and I believe that the armory would not be a community rec center, it would be another venue for us to use. We're going to be building our community and rec center, and I don't think that they're going to interfere with each other, and I think if we could model ourselves after the town of Bel Air with, when they acquired the armory, they're doing a wonderful job of bringing in events, everything from trade shows to weddings, to conferences, it's, they've got a lot going on, and I think it's something that, as we get closer, I think those are things we need to take a look at. So with that, that's all I have to say tonight. Mary Jo, you're on.
I don't have anything to say to you.
Very good.
Does that have a comment about the armory?
Yes, sir, lay it on us.
Oh, for one, that's a historical, a historical building, and I think it needs to be part of the town of Elton. Number two, you can't have too many places that is for recreation, or a building that we could use other than upstairs for other activities that we have for the parks and rec. Just, just the way the place is right now, it's set up in a nice way for use in case of rain, whatever. Down downstairs, we could probably modify to do with some of the things that you just mentioned, but I've always was, want the need for that building, and like I said, if you go any other town, you've got several places all around town for youth, adults to go to, and this is be a prime place for us. That's all.
Okay, Charles?
I guess commenting on some of the same things that I've all said, and certainly I'm like you, that we have no use for it, but as I reflect, long ago, that the armory was used for a variety of social activities, was used for high school dances, they also had graduations there, the YMC basketball, adults that used to play there at the time, the YMC eight was down the street there in the town of Elton. And I also recall back when Santa Claus used to be there, and Earl used to go there, and they would give candy, orange and an apple, so it, it served the shoes, and I still would like to see it be maintained in the community. That's it.
Very good. Gene?
Well, for my two cents, I guess, I've always been interested in the county armory. I, I think I'm, I'm open to all suggestions, but I think I have always felt that since the busting, it seems here, that it might be a good opportunity for one of our departments, namely the police department, to take a look at that, whether it's feasible or not. I have no idea. I only have one quick question. What's the status of the property on Holland Torres Avenue in?
Three twenty-four.
Yeah.
It's, it's in the hands of the court as far as I know. Did the town purchase the, purchase the certificate? No, John, there's an update on what's going on there.
I haven't spoken to the other firm in probably thirty days, just waiting for the process to finish up. It was like six months in period.
How far are we into that? If you had a guess?
Probably within one, two months.
Okay.
It's in the process, there's nothing we can do to speed it up.
And once, once we're through the process, then we can move forward with demolition. Okay, thank you.
The other day, Chip had called me pretty excited, actually. I think he might have misinterpreted, or I'm not sure how he interpreted that letter, but he said, I think we can move forward and, and knock it down, and, but I don't, I, he never got back to me whether we could or we couldn't. So it may be, it could be a little closer than we think.
It could be. I'll, I'll post it tomorrow.
And, and one last thing. We did talk a while ago about blighted properties?
Mm-hmm.
Getting a list? I've never seen one.
I haven't seen it either.
Or a game plan of what we can and not do with some of these places, so even if we have to put it on a workshop, I would like to move forward with this. That and all.
You got it, Lou? Very good. Brandon and Nicole, come on down, and you're the first up this evening.
Good evening.
We wouldn't even let her sit down.
She didn't want to come up here.
There you go.
You called her out, so.
Very good.
She's here. But me and Nicole are here this evening to really talk about the grand prix with all of you, and ask for permission to move forward for our fourth annual grand prix. We would, we'd like to do it October fifth, which is two thousand and making it first. We're trying to keep it around the first Saturday on October. Seems like the weather's been holding up for us around then, it's not too cold, but if you can still wear jackets, stuff like that, which is nice, and get people out. So far we haven't had rain yet, knock on wood. We avoided the rain, but we feel like they're definitely well. We definitely are working on some major improvements as far as making things better. It's growing, we have a lot of people, we have a lot of interest in there, we have a lot of interest with bigger companies getting involved. If you don't know, our, our main sponsor right now is the corporations, corporates, Pep Boys, they've committed, they're committed now to two more years. So they've been with us two years as a major sponsor, their main sponsor, they've committed to two more years. They're excited, they want to grow it. I.
We were thinking maybe not have it combined with the five K anymore, have it be a grand prix day all on its own, and we would like to have, you know, the earliest time available for the closing of the street, so we have ample time to set up.
Yeah, we feel like our schedule went well this year, even though we had a mishap, so we got back on track, and we were able to get the street back open. Oh, the street, it wasn't open by four, which was like quarter after four, was right between Menahans and my shop, because we were cleaning up ahead, we wanted to make sure we had the streets very nice and clean. The other, the other streets we went, got them open immediately, let the officers know that we had them open, because we were taking the stuff down, stacking for the town, you know, in order to know when other cars come through. So we feel like if we had the streets closed by eight, we could be in and out of there by four at the latest. I think it could be, if everything goes smoothly, I think it could be sooner, because we'd like to start the racing in eleven AM. Like that would give us three hours to set up, and give us more time, you know, to make it safer and make it better. You know, do a little more tires in there, and we're, we're going to put some more snow fence up, a couple areas we want to touch. But we really have been looking at it before, and we've really looked at it during the race and after. So, but it's been a positive thing. We had a lot more turnout this year, we have a lot more people, more by carts, but I, I got them on hold kind of, because I want to make sure, of course, we need to get approval for a fourth year, and we have some big names that want to get involved, and I have a friend of mine here tonight, Tim Peep, said I'll let him participate in that, he's been talking with some people that want to get involved. And, you know, we have involved, they're coming down, we're doing a slash training with our cart guys, race day in Chestertail. We met a gentleman that owns the racetrack, a go-kart racetrack that I didn't even know existed in Chestertail, he's owned it for thirty-eight years. So he wants to get involved and help us with making the race better, teaches more about go-karts, training our drivers more. So we're going to race there, October twenty seventh and twenty eighth, if anybody wants to come down, it, it's open to the public for spectators. There'll be more than just our race, there'll be about ten or twelve races at a day. But they have opened their arms to us to have a class just for our guys for helping the grand prix come down, separate class, run six to eight races in the summer, and crown the grand champion downtown Elton, where we start. So then we need more people involved, because they can race their car more, but partly it'll make them a better driver, and we'll have a lot of fun with it. So we'd like you guys to consider that, and if you have any questions on all yours.
Well, I think you and I and Nicole had a discussion about my concerns, and I'm wearing my mayor hat, my utmost concern is the safety of our residents of our town. We've discussed ways to make that better, and maybe I won't have to drink as much Pepto Bismol next year, but I can tell you, the, I know that the merchants really enjoyed it, I know that the community that came out and took a look at it, really enjoyed it, and I think if we can just implement those more safety items, and, and I think that, I think we'll be in very, very good shape. So my concerns, you have addressed with me. Does anyone from the board have any questions, comments?
I thought it went well, you only had the one mishap, but I cannot recall how much time actually elapsed before you got started, how much was that?
So Charles, we were down about forty minutes to forty-five minutes. That was cleaning up, taking a look at the track. We did readjust the track, I call it the track, but the street, Main Street, between Menahans and Howard, Bo Street, I'm sorry, Bo Street. So what we did is, we made a quick change so that the guys were coming through single file line, because that was our major turn that we were worried about, because it is coming downhill, Main Street. We adjusted that immediately, it fixed our problem. Moving forward, that's the way we're going to set it up in the future. I am going to put more tires there versus straw, just because keeping it off the street. We're going to use straw, but keep it in that area, I think the tires give a little more if you have a little bump or whatever. So, and moving forward, we also are going to have three members of premier's crew on, from Menahans to the turn, with whistles, flags, things of that nature.
How'd you make it out of speed bumps?
Actually, we did go over speed bumps this year, and went pretty well. I think, I think we're actually adapting a little bit to how they are, but honestly, it makes it interesting, of course. We did talk to Little League, and they're fine, they gave us a letter to okay to pay around the speed bumps, which we were trying to do before this year's race, but we had some rain before, and we were worried that it wasn't going to sit and cure, and it would just make a mess. So we, we decided to go ahead and use the speed bumps this year. So we decided to go ahead and use the speed bumps this year. Moving forward, we do want to pave around them.
You have to pave the lanes.
So we have a plan with that and get some sponsors there. So that kind of, just so you know how it would look, if we're going to probably pave 14 feet. If you're standing in the speed bump, where our plan was to do 14 feet out from each side and then back to the parking spot. So we'll finish the parking spot so it looks nice. And then moving forward past that, we had already had them set aside. I had made plates to where we can drill them into the asphalt. And then the orange cones that are, that go in, we can put a set screw through, put them in so that someone can't come down the street and go around this speed bump when we're not using it. That way you can't decide to go around that area. And I could, that's something that typically is mounted permanently. But I figured out we smacked it up at my shop to where we can put them in and out and quickly, in and out after the race. So they'll stay here all year and look nice and be firm. But then when we want to do the race, we can just take a screwdriver, dip them out, put them in the truck for that day and then put them right back.
Well, just make sure as we do that, we work with our public works department to make sure it's state highway approved in any manner.
And what I would also like to say with the visitors, I was stationed up at Main and North. And I spoke to several people that came from Delaware to see this race, which is great for tourism downtown. And the best story I love to hear is there was a couple from northeast that came out, didn't realize we had all the new businesses. They came out to see the race, went and saw the new businesses and went inside. And so it really does help for tourism downtown.
Mary Jo, we're super excited because it really is starting to draw. You know, it takes a lot of built on. And I think if we can make it to year five, we're going to be like, what just happened? You know what I mean? Because people are really starting to show interest. We had a group of racers from Hagerstown that came up and spent the whole day. They reached out to them on social media, said they were coming and loved it. Out of all, they're interested in maybe putting some carts in the race. We, that's how I met the guys from Chester Town. They were there, looked at the race. We went families, three families I met from Virginia that worked with our racer. We have a racer that comes from Virginia over here. But we have, these guys were not from there, but heard about it. And I think they heard about it through his social media. Because then once I sent it to him, he sent it up to his friends. So they heard about it, came up, had a blast. We had a new, a new family, their son moved here, transferred and started working here with Core. So they moved to follow their grandbabies. Well, they came to the race, came to Salt Lake City the next day, on that Monday at my shop and said, "That was the most fun we've had in ages." So that really made me happy that they got to see that. They're from Massachusetts, but they came to the race and they actually said that they really enjoyed launching C3 that day and loved it. So they were really taken. So that's the kind of stuff we want to see. Obviously, you know, we want to make it better each year, but just consider it and hopefully, we can come together and get this done for another year.
Well, I would say that, does anyone have any problem with the date of October 5th? I don't think any of us have a date with the issue. But now, we do have a new policy that you have to go in front of the Elton Alliance to get the approval because the road's going to have to be closed. And make sure there's no conflicts with anything else that we got going on. But I would say the blessing of the races.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very good.
Good.
Good job.
Now, Mr. Givlin has something to say. Come on down. Yes, sir.
Actually, I have two items. First is a question about the Recreation Advisory Committee. Would it be their job, you know, to discuss and plan a possible fishing derby next spring? And also, a possible community swimming pool next to the community center, a few years down the road? That would be their part of the job?
And to answer your question, yep. And you would meet in front of that board? And you would give your suggestions? And I absolutely love the fishing tournament.
I also think the community center should have a couple of ping pong tables and some pool tables.
Can you play ping pong?
At the last year.
Yes, can you play table tennis or ping pong?
Oh, I've played a lot in the boys' club, though, when I was growing up. I don't want to brag, but I want to champion. One thing is that I had mentioned maybe two years ago that there's a large tree in the Elton Cemetery. And I believe I was corrected that it was a black cherry tree. Well, I took some photos this morning.
Wow.
And what I did is that I checked, and what they do for large trees, large tree registry, that they measured the diameter of four and a half feet up from the ground. And I had a metal tape measure and I did a quick measurement. And my rough measurement turned out to be 16 feet, 3 inches, or 195 inches in circumference, four and a half feet up. So I looked at what the state check was. And it's a tree in Mount Airy. And let's see, it's only 106 inches in diameter. And like my rough measurement was 195 inches.
Wow.
So I put together a draft letter, which I had not mailed out yet. And it's to the Maryland Association of Forest Conservancy District Forests. If the mayor and town council thinks that it's acceptable, I will mail it out.
Well, very good. Well, the main one you got to get to is Little George. If he likes it, we'll do it.
I think you should do it.
Land it down right across the table.
So I'm going to measure it again and make sure that I'm not way off. But my measurement shows it to be almost twice the diameter of the current state.
Wow. But certainly bigger than that one I see at Mount Airy. They're not, well, they're not going to be the champion any longer. I said, "They're not going to be the champion any longer." We'll call this the Givlin Tree.
If it's acceptable, I'll mail it, we'll let it out tomorrow.
All right, we're going to have Lou. Lou, is it, you know, take a quick one? I'm sure it's okay.
Absolutely.
He'll respond to you tomorrow. Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say this evening? Oh, I have this on it. I have it signed down. Yeah, so I did. Yeah, well, I can only write that. For Luke and... Seeing none? Oh, come on down. State your name and address, please.
Tim Heath, some from the 4th time here. I was with Brandon.
Very good.
So as Brandon touched on, that we've been in contact with that racetrack in Chester Town. So obviously, everybody saw the newspaper that lied. And I reached out to these guys because I don't, I don't want to see this happen to anybody else. It was own stupidity, we'll leave it at that. But I want, I want to make it a better event because I'm a grad racer. I've been with several grad racer organizations as part of PDRA and ADRL. And I've always been told, if you give them a place to go, they're going to come. So if we can, if we can come out and make something out of this to where we can go up to somebody and say, "Hey, you haven't been to the town of Elton and I know you acquired us about the race. But you said you didn't feel comfortable spending that money for one race. We have now set up a series. We're going to run, like he said, six to eight races in the summer. What do you feel about that?" I feel that's going to be more inclined for the new business owners and business owners in Elton to spend the money to come out and play with us and enjoy themselves where, as far as one race compared to 10 races, it's going to... And it's going to give the drivers better knowledge on how to handle themselves in situations so we don't have mishaps and we don't have, you know... But I just, I want, one thing I wanted to touch on was that with the Cecil Week, putting a picture out there. I really feel that that should have been left alone. They should have put more of the positive pictures out there. There was, I mean, there was people out there having a ball. And we need to focus more on the positive side of it instead of the negative side. So if we can, if we can bring anything out of the negativity that happened and make it more positive, I think it's going to be a great event. And hopefully, we can keep going.
How are you feeling?
Good.
Very good. And listen, I think if you contact the Cecil Week Senator?
It is what it is.
Very good, all right.
It's 300, the road.
Well, listen, and...
He's racing next weekend, so don't feel too bad.
Well, listen, Katie's going to do a fantastic article about it this time. Very good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have anything to say this evening? Seeing none, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.